Okay, just recording.
All righty. It is six oh three here on November fourth, Election Day 2025. And this is a regular meeting of the Common Council. The City of Oneonta will call this meeting to order if you would.
Mayor Drennic.
Here.
Councilmember Moshe Campoli.
Here.
Councilmember Walsh Russo.
Here.
Councilmember McHugh.
Here.
Councilmember LaPari Shu.
Here.
Councilmember Carson.
Here.
Councilmember Harichay.
Here.
Councilmember Forster Rothbart. Councilmember Masson.
Here.
All right, if you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. And we are graced by the presence of Dr. Alberto Carde, the President of SUNY Oneonta, who's going to present sort of your state of the city, except your state of the SUNY.
I don't know about that. Well, first of all, I appreciate the graced comment. But no, thank you. Thank you for the invitation. As you know, we've been trying to do this at least once a year in the fall, at the beginning of every academic year, although we are way past. I think we're in our 10th week already. But it's important to come back and report to the city where we are on a couple of issues. But I wanted to, first of all, so thank the Common Council for that. But I think on this Election Day, I really wanted to thank all the candidates that have run. Wanted to thank the members of our community that sit on committees and boards, because public service, I think that now more than ever is really the secret sauce that we need to make sure that we continue to facilitate a continued civil exchanges of ideas and approaches to, you know, some really, as they say in sociology, some really wicked problems that we all have to face. But I think that those who volunteer and stand up should be, you know, recognized and regardless of whether or not they're successful in their candidacy, regardless of that, be commended for that. And on behalf of the university, we want to go on record and say that. I also wanted to make sure I extend my sincere appreciation to Mayor Drennic for his leadership, his friendship during his time as mayor. I know this may be the last time I speak to the Common Council while you're still mayor. And I wanted to say thank you for being a partner in my first four years, five years at the institution. So thank you for that. We also want to make sure that we, everybody knows that SUNY Oneonta remains fully committed to working alongside the council, the city staff, the incoming mayor to build on this continued collaboration that we have set up for the last few years. We know that working together with, we can take the local opportunities and make them into positive realities in a way that continues to benefit our students, residents, and the broader community. I think some of those areas, there are many, but you know, some of the ones that I want to highlight right now clearly is around the issue of dear management campaign. And I think that we were able to, this year, work together. And we value the additional effort that was taken on the side of the city to address some of our concerns. Our work to serve as one of the stage sponsors for the Miller Plaza Stage is another. And our continued work with interns and other opportunities and meetings at the university. The state of the university is strong. We continue to, yes, monitor policy and funding changes at the federal level. Right now, we have seemed to have weathered the current, right now, storm in terms of no major federal cut. We had risk of cut, reduction of one grant that was reinstated. And the only cut, reduction that we've had is one cut of about $13,000. So we will see, however, we will, one of our major grants, our college access for migrant program, migrant program is up for refunding next year. So this is the last year of its funding, so we will submit and continue to see where it goes. We are monitoring very closely the view, the use of our food pantry. As we know, many of our students are on SNAP benefits and seeing where that is being impacted. You know, the SUNY continues to fund the institution very well. I mean, the executive and Governor Hokel, we have now three years of continued additional investments into SUNY. One of those that has translated to us here, by the way, that translates into approximately $1.8 to $2.4 million a year for our operating costs at the university. And that is in lieu of any tuition increases. So we, you know, we continue to operate on tuition set back in 2019. But additional funding has allowed us to implement a program called ACE that's working with students that are Pell eligible. Those are, those students that qualify because of economic conditions for Pell grants to improve. And they receive additional support to increase their retention, making sure that they're able to come back. We are now the second wave of SUNY institutions that are implementing ACE. And we hope to see increases of anywhere from 2% to 7% increases in retention rate from that group. SUNY has also increased a component of focus on seamless transfers. In other words, allowing students to seamlessly transfer from a community college into the university. And we were recently able to sign an agreement with Hudson Valley Community College, where through 10 of their programs, if the students get admitted into Hudson Valley Community College, they're automatically admitted into SUNY Oneonta as long as they maintain a certain GPA and complete the coursework. We hope to expand those relationships with, expand our existing relationship with Broom as well as with Connected E Community College. But I think it's also important to know that those of you who monitor this stuff, the budget, you know, our budget letter that came from the state is saying, is calling for a flat budget, which in the current conditions, we are, you know, happy to have flat budgets. And so we will see where we end up in May and June. I also wanted to maybe also draw your attention to, I thought was a very good opinion piece. And I am biased, I'm one of the co-authors of it. But we did it with our regional partners, with President Mullins at Hartwig, President Mary Bondrov at Dalhuy, and President Torrenzio at Kobol School. And really, we thought, we felt very strongly that it was important to continuously demonstrate that despite some of the narratives at the national level, which are focused on a small group and cadre of institutions and higher education at the national level, the reality is that the benefits of higher education are objectively positive. And especially if you bring them down to the local level, our four institutions continue to address, you know, key issues here in our regions, from workforce to extending of healthcare access, to creating opportunities for social mobility, to essentially working and partnering with government and business to together address the challenges that some of us, that alone we cannot address. And I think some of those, you know, here locally, here at SUNY Oneonta, our Institute for Local News, where our students are working with local news agencies and news outlets to provide them with that ability to report, given that, you know, in many regards, they lack the workforce to do that. The GoZone with our partners in Springbrook, where they have a program where students can come and spend the day in, at SUNY Oneonta, provides their students with an opportunity and then provides our students with an experiential opportunity to work with those students with cognitive disabilities. So it is those kind of partnerships where we're, that are the symbiotic relationships really make the sense and that we will continue to explore. You know, I know a lot of folks are always interested in, and we are too, with enrollment. So we are, our census data numbers as of today, we're a total of 5,544 total students. That's about 200 additional students than we were last year. So it is about 4,818 undergraduates and 786 graduate students. That represents about a 3% increase in undergrad and about a 10% increase in graduate. You know, I think that that mimics, that represents what is happening at the national level. A declining population of 18 to 24-year-olds, but a growing population of individuals who want to come back and advance their careers through graduate education. Other areas that I just wanted to highlight from, you know, where the state of the university, we continue to get very good recognitions. We were ranked number 11 of the top schools in the Northeast by U.S. News and World Report. You know, we were ranked among Forbes Top 500 Colleges nationally. We were ranked, awarded America's Best College by Money Magazine. And we were ranked the top 250 colleges and universities in The Wall Street Journal. By the way, that made us the top four from the SUNY system institutions. So those are accomplishments that we're very happy for. We continue to make good advances in our fundraising. Last year, we had a $6 million raised through our donors and alumni. That means our endowment is at around $92 million. I haven't checked where we are today. You know, as you know, the market changes and changes our endowment, but we are about the $92 million mark. But more importantly is that what we were able to do with internships. Last year, we started a program called Strive for 135, where we wanted, because we were celebrating 135th year anniversary last year, we wanted to attain, get 135 new or recommitted internships from our alumni. I thought it was an aspirational goal. I wasn't very optimistic that we'd get it. We got 140. So we continue to demonstrate that our alum know that our students are of good quality and want to work with them, to provide them those opportunities. Some of the other things in 2024, 25, that we, how we impacted the community, you know, $3.4 million purchased from local suppliers, vendors, and contractors, over 43,000 hours of volunteer service to local nonprofits, almost half a million dollars in scholarships and awards just to local students from our foundation. And we had over 5,200 alumni bringing back talent. 52 alumni among the Tri-County region that have stayed here and continue to keep their talents here in the region. And of course, an area where we are very happy to report that we continue to have success, and that is our Excel Center, right across, right down the street here. You know, we've served over 2,500 learners. And we have over, you know, over almost $2.5 million grants that has allowed us to continue to provide that workforce development opportunities. And as my predecessor Nancy Klonuski used to say, you know, and I've said it many times, we're not a community college, but we're the college of the community now with the university of the community. And we are committed to continue to, we're doing those workforce that allow, programs that allow those, that maybe college is not for them right now or the university is not right for them, the opportunities to get the trainings that they need. And those have, those areas include everything from direct support professionals that work with students with cognitive disabilities to the Project Excite grant funding that included IT, healthcare profession programs. And we have two additional ones. We had the manufacturing boot camp that was just concluded a few weeks ago. That was in collaboration with Broom County Community College. And it allowed trained individuals for a career in manufacturing that covered the foundation knowledge and professional skills needed that they need in order to jump in and get careers in manufacturing. And we were also included in the Mohawk Valley R E B C grant proposal, the Achieve Grant Proposal, that if the region gets that grant, we will, we hope to be able to offer, deliver destination entrepreneurship and tourism workforce training and micro credentials that will be available to those that reside in the whole Mohawk Valley region. And then, you know, finally, I'll conclude by highlighting, I think, our continued work with our Regional Innovation Council. I know we have met with many of you throughout, over the last few weeks. We are committed to continue to work and identify those areas. We're committed to working with the new mayor to solve those issues that we continue to hope that we could together identify. And then finally, highlight that this coming Saturday, we'll have about 1,500 students and family members that have come to campus for our Fall Open House. And we, you know, they have come, they spend time in the city because they know, we know that when they're looking at SUNY Oneonta, they're also looking at Oneonta. So we are very lucky to be able to demonstrate and show them that this is a place where families can leave their students. And they are able to, and we know that the city is an extension of our campus. And we want to make sure that in partnership, we continue to make sure that that is of the highest quality. Thank you very much. And I don't know if there's any comments or questions. More than happy to.
Dr. Carde, so thank you very much for the presentation. And I appreciate your willingness to take a couple of questions. Does anybody in council have a question for Dr. Carde?
Not a question, just thank you very much, Carolyn. Thank you very much for coming. And I appreciate the data, very helpful. Sounds like you're on the uptick, which is great news. Thank you for marketing Oneonta State College, much appreciated. But also want to thank you and Carolyn for leading the housing initiative. Very much appreciate that. And I am trying to get some of the members of the Housing Commission to join with you on Monday the 10th. I believe it's at 10:00 AM. Okay, thank you. Yes, there are many more that I didn't mention, so.
And Dr. Carde, I wonder if you could just kind of maybe tease out something that, for the City of Oneonta, obviously, economic growth is huge. We're dealing with the budget tonight and, you know, creating new funding streams, hugely important to us. Retention hugely important to us as well. And there's a program that is launching soon, the Firestarter Academy. Is that something that you're able to talk about?
Sure. Actually, I had left it out because I thought it already had gone too long. But thank you for the opportunity to, you know, both to Councilman Carson to highlighting our housing, that was another one that I had left out. So yes, the idea is that we will want to institutionalize our entrepreneurship program, specifically our entrepreneur-in-residence program that works with students to help them prepare pitch competitions for a competition, for then a competition later in May, to continue to, you know, by which they get awarded and provide additional assistance to hopefully be able to start their company. And we started it last year, it was in conjunction with Hartwig, and had some really talented students present some interesting ideas. In addition to that, we have, we want to start a program that allows us to work with existing entrepreneurs to provide opportunities for students in one way or another to try to maybe open businesses, open opportunities here in the city. And we are looking for, it's an internal funding competition. And if we were able to solidify that, we will have a part-time individual that will work on bringing together the partnership, the partners that we need. But the goal is, and this has been the part, the goal of the Regional Innovation Council, right, since the beginning, is like, how do we get more of our students, both from SUNY Oneonta and Hartwig, to stay and to decide to start their careers here?
Thank you so much, Dr. Carde.
Thank you very much.
And at this point, we are, we have another presentation, Solar Energy, Microgrid, and Power Purchase Agreement by Wave Acadia Energy. And Chuck Schwerin is here. Chuck? Did I butcher your last name, Chuck?
No, you did pretty well.
All right.
Apologies for those who may be hearing a bit of this for the third time. So thank you for the invitation, Greg and Cecilia. I'm Chuck Schwerin, and I've got two hats tonight. One is with Acadia Energy, which is a company based in Auburn, New York. We're upstaters. And our mission is to help communities become more resilient with renewable energy whereby all the benefits stay local. So we're looking to do sort of public-private collaboration. And I want to describe a potential project that we'd love to partner with you on. And we presented this at the Finance and HR Committee a couple of weeks ago and to Climate Smart Communities Task Force last week. And I'm reprising it tonight for the whole Common Council. And I look forward to your questions. So the other hat I have is for a nonprofit that we are affiliated with called Take Charge New York. And its purpose is to bring more strength to upstate counties to have a better voice in Albany with respect to the energy picture. You may be aware that the local utility is looking for another rate increase. It's substantial, and it will continue to be as they are faced with the cost of upgrading the grid statewide. It's enormously expensive. And one way to alleviate some of that pressure is to decentralize energy generation and keep the benefits local, meaning revenue local, energy local, and where the community helps decide how that energy should be allocated. So to that end, we won a grant, the nonprofit Take Charge won a grant from the Appalachian Regional Commission last year. Otsego is one of the Appalachian counties, you know, more northern counties, and is part of the region. And in working with Otsego Now and the Planning Department, we identified a couple of properties in the county that looked interesting for microgrid development, one of which we're talking about tonight, which is on Silas Lane, sort of behind the school bus garage. And it was identified in a 2023 report that you folks commissioned with Ramble Engineering to look at thermal energy in the city. But part of that was, hey, what about this site? It's about a 40-acre site on Silas Lane. Could be supportive of a solar array to help provide power to the city. It was kind of an aside, but it is the same site that Jody Zakrowski mentioned to us when we met with him. So we took a look at it. We got in touch with Chris Yakabucci and Greg Tyson. They've been very helpful in our digging deeper to see if there's something there. So what's the proposal? The proposal is that on our nickel, Acadia Energy, we develop a solar array at that property, run our own lines to the wastewater treatment facility up the road, thereby allowing the facility to draw power vastly more cheaply than they currently do. And then any excess that we generate, we would export through the wastewater treatment facility lines to the grid, but whereby the credit for that power would be given from the utility to the city for up to nine other accounts of your choosing. So what does this translate to? We, thanks to Greg and Ginny Lee, we looked at nine of the other sites that seem to be the most expensive in terms of energy use. And based on what you're currently spending for power, both at the wastewater treatment facility, for both the commodity as well as to get the electrons into the building, which is transmission and distribution, which is the faster-growing piece of the pie, you're spending about just under a half a million dollars a year, $433,000 a year. If we can collaborate with you to provide power behind the meter, meaning running our own lines and avoiding that transmission and distribution cost, if we can utilize 12 acres of that 40-acre site, we can confidently save you about 36% of that bill every year. And remember, as your power expenses go up, that benefit goes up. That savings becomes larger every year. So this would be for 20 years, 20 to 25 years. So what's the gotcha here? There ain't no gotcha, there's enough to go around. We can keep the lights on, selling power to you at eight cents a kilowatt hour. And you can get credit from the utility at 11.45 cents a kilowatt hour. So you're making money on every kilowatt that we can export through the wastewater treatment facility. One of the major challenges we found in trying to develop these projects in upstate New York, and we're talking to multiple counties, is the grid is at capacity or overcapacity. And if we want to add power, then the utility says, upgrade our substations. Have at it. Thanks for sharing. That's millions and millions of dollars that the developer has to support. A neat way around it is what we're proposing here in Oneonta, by going through a facility that already is connected to the grid, wastewater treatment facility, and you can send electrons back and forth. So that's a neat way to avoid having to upgrade the substation. But we still have to do an application with the utility for an interconnect, which is called a CSER report. And again, this is, we're not asking for a penny from the city. We're just looking to save you 36% if we can every year. And we can all make out, right? And it alleviates some of the pressure on the grid. And it, and as I said, your benefits increase every year as the utility costs go up. So what's our ask? Our ask is for a non-binding memo of understanding from the city so that we can go ahead and invest, we're looking probably $75,000 to do the application with the utility for this report, this interconnection report, to have our engineering partner drill down into, you know, how many acres can we actually use that would get permitted? Because that lot does tend to get wet now again. But we're talking about solar panels where you can, you can grow flowers underneath. You can, you know, you can cultivate bees. You can graze sheep if you want. So it's, it's still developable because of the nature of what we're trying to do. So again, what we're looking for is a non-binding MOU so that we can then do the work to give you a hard and fast proposal. And then we would ask for commitment so that we can, you know, that MOU has value to us when we go to our funders and say, we have a willing partner in the city as long as we can put the pieces together. And to have a year to do that. The other piece, the other schedule is imposed upon us by Washington. The big beautiful bill included in that is a sunsetting of investment tax credits that make it feasible for energy developers to do, to fund a project. It represents about 30% of the cost of the project. That's out of our pocket. To get, to be eligible for those funds, we need to demonstrate that real work has started at the site before July 3rd. I can't tell you whether that's feasible or not. We're going to do everything we can to try to get through the permitting process if you agree to go forward with us. And as long as we can demonstrate real work by that date, then we are eligible for those ITCs, which allows it economically be feasible for us to do. Again, no dollars from the city, just savings and cooperation. We also have to go through the town to make, because we're asking for a waiver of a setback. The property line setback is currently 150 feet. The more acreage we can utilize from that site, the more power we can send through the wastewater treatment. the wastewater treatment plant, the more credit you can get at the other end. So it's, we have aligned interests in trying to alleviate or mitigate that setback where it makes sense. And we're also very sensitive to the fact that there's a trail, a nature trail that sort of circumvents that property, and we certainly want to be sensitive to the users of that trail and design it accordingly. But you'll be partners in all this. We're not doing this and washing our hands and sending the power downstate. That's not what this is about. So it's a novel approach. We've talked to the New York Power Authority, NIPA, who said, we like this novel idea, we haven't heard this before, we'd like to co-develop with you with some of these major microgrids that we're doing. I don't know whether they'll be involved in this one or not, but they're very intrigued because this, what we're trying to do, checks all the boxes of the climate law, the CLCPA, that's very challenging, very aspirational to try to hit the amount of electrification that the governor would like by, you know, the next five, 10, 15 years. And we're doing our part to try to help out. So that's the story, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Actually, I'd like to open up a questioning from the council, anybody who has a question for Chuck?
I just wanted to say thank you very much for coming again, and appreciate the time just to inform the rest of the council what I've already been, you know, well-informed about, and it's just every time we hear it, it's very...
Well, you're not yawning, so I guess that's okay.
Not at all, and it's a very exciting project, so I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Well, we don't have a motion on the agenda, but we do have a motion that's written that we can probably bring forward, actually, at this point in the meeting, so that we can allow you to have the rest of your evening. So Cecilia, do you have, do you happen to have that motion handy?
I do.
Do you want to introduce it?
Can I have a second? Yes. I'm hoping the very last line in the presentation is a typo, and that's July 3rd, 2026.
Yes, it is.
Because my job is to not enrooing agreements.
That's awful, that's awful. Forget everything I said, it's too late.
On the other side of this motion, if we have a second on the motion, we'd want to ask you to just hang and maybe join in the discussion that the council may have prior to a vote. Go ahead, Cecilia.
Would you like me to be the question?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion that's proposed is that the Common Council authorizes the mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement between the City of Oneonta and Akadia Energy Corporation to establish a framework for good-faith discussions regarding the potential development, construction, and operation of a renewable energy installation at a city-owned property on Silas Lane, tax map parcel number 309.00-1-7.21, subject to review and approval by the city attorney.
Do I have a second on the motion? I've got, I'm going to go with Don, I think you beat him to the punch. All right, discussion and questions that anyone may have, Shannon?
I can jump in one more before you do that?
Yes.
Can we amend that, a friendly amendment to make the memorandum of understanding?
I said memorandum of agreement. No, we won't, I said memorandum of understanding.
You said agreement.
You said agreement, so I just wanted to make sure that that's...
Oh, no, no, no. My, then that was my error, it's memorandum of understanding.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And that resolved?
How long is the lease?
Sorry?
You said that there was a lease.
Right, we would also lease that usable acreage, how long did you say?
Yeah.
The proposal is for 20 years with two five-year extensions, your option.
That's a good question.
Katie, do you have?
Yes, so we are, we own that parcel, but around us is a very critical component of the Oneonta School District, and I'm wondering if anyone has reached out to them with regard to the impact of construction or, you know, any impact that this might have on their operations. Obviously, you know, this seems like you would be wanting to start work before the summer, which is good, but I just want to make sure that we are not doing something that, you know, inadvertently negatively impacts anybody else.
Great.
I haven't discussed this directly with the school district, but certainly like any construction project, there's temporary traffic control measures, that sort of thing, bringing materials, we would work to accommodate that. This wouldn't impact their property directly, you know, the access road.
Right, okay.
Yes, Lynn?
I don't know who wants to answer the question, but do we pay taxes on that parcel?
I believe we do.
We do, yes. Okay. So if we do, we would change the status. If we don't, would we change the status by accepting this type of partnership where we're, in essence, we're getting paid? I mean, I understand that we're borrowing our utility bill, but we're...
We've actually leased the parcel out in the past to farmers who were growing corn, things of that nature, so it's already, it's already been income-producing in the past. I don't know whether we currently have one. Remember, I walked by there, whoever drive by, there were lots of corn stalks coming up from that field, so.
Okay.
The only thing that, from my perspective, is I didn't want to sell the school district, that's friggin' five acres, because we owned it originally. I hate, I hate committing city properties to something, you know, at one point we would have put soccer fields in there, it was possibly a park, you know, which shows you, again, how away. So this may be a great, a great project, but understand that what you're committing to is three years. So that may, that may be the best 30-year lease that we ever entered into because of the incredibly rising cost of what energy is going to be in the next 30 years, but just understand that so, once it's there, it's there, and that ground is committed on behalf of the city.
By the way, I would also point out that we would provide the resources for ultimate decommissioning, so that's not on you at the end of that.
I make sure that that would happen, yeah.
Lynn, did you have one?
Yeah, so Chuck, you mentioned something about the rate, I think you said something about eight cents a kilowatt. Does that have an escalator on it?
Two percent.
Anyway. And that goes along with what we sell, or what you sell it out on the grid for, or the credit?
So...
Meaning both are not locked-in rates?
Correct. I can tell you that the utility, that 11.45 recently went up, and it will continue to go up as, you know, just the value of the commodity goes up. It's gone up faster than 2% of, you know, it's going up faster than 2%. I mean, their rate increase that they're asking for is in the...
Thirty-three percent.
Right, right. Now, they're probably not going to get all of that, but they're going to get a boatload of it. And it's been estimated that it's going to take $60 billion to upgrade the grid in this state. Only $6 billion, 10% has been authorized so far. So we're looking at the tip of the iceberg in terms of rate increases. And this is a way for you to protect yourselves. But yes, it's a 2% escalator. Thank you.
Further question?
I just want to ask.
Lynn?
So how is this project, how is this project different that we don't have to go out to bid? We've only heard from one, and we're going to enter into a 30-year agreement. How is it that we don't have to go out to public bids?
This is, this is not, this is not a project that we're proposing. We're not, we're not going out for a bid on a grid. That's an idiosyncratic thing, so if we're essentially leasing the property, can we lease long-term? Yeah, we can do that, we don't have to bid out before we lease. I don't think that there are any other entities of this type that we can simply put out an RFP and say if somebody else has a plan, it's essential to lease a leasing property.
No. And we're also not expanding the land.
So because someone came forward and identified a particular piece of parcel that they're interested in, we don't have to go back out to the public first to the assets? I just don't know this, I'm asking.
It would depend on, it would depend on the situation. In this situation, because that city-owned land right now has no use, the council has the authority to decide the lease in for use. If you wanted to sell the property, that would be a different process.
Further questions? Yes, Katie?
Yes, well, now that we've brought up selling the property, I'm wondering why we hang on to it? Can anybody answer that question?
Because any property that we have is generally gold, and we don't give it away to other people unless there's a real good reason to do it. The reason we don't sell our parks is the reason we don't sell city hall and hall three three.
Well, but those are used, this mostly just sits there and we brushhog it, so I'm sort of wondering, like...
This is, this is, this is money in the bank for, available for projects such as this, but it won't be there anymore if we adapt it, if we choose it, not to mean that in a negative sense.
Right, right, right. Well, that's, I guess that's what I'm thinking, is like, you know, if we're going to commit it for 30 years, and we won't be able to do anything with it, and we will generate money for the 30 years, seems like a smart decision, but we just haven't talked about selling it. We have talked about selling city property.
It actually has a very low inherent value because it's wetlands, and it's, if it could be, if it could have been developed property, I'm sure some people would, and it's not.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion?
And Mark, we're only using 12 out of the 40, is that right?
I'm sorry.
12 acres out of the 40.
So the preliminary engineering work that we've already paid for suggested that seven acres we could count on. We think we could get to 12 if we can get a waiver on that 150-foot setback. And there's even been muttering about it, you know, let's look creatively, is there any way to expand that? I invite you to tell us what else we might use that's contiguous. I know there's DPW land, just, you know, adjacent, it's used for storing stuff, but we're, you know, if we can be creative, 12 acres gets us the 36% savings. Seven acres would get you about a 20% savings.
And so the 150 buffer is for what, the school bus garage?
It's on all sides, there's sort of, the general zone is, you know, 150-foot setback. I'd submit there may not be any good reason for that based on that parcel, but that's up to the town, you know.
And you're also checking for a front scene, a Sasquatch number, you have to have a 150...
And then there's, you know, a tree buffer there, no, we're not looking to reduce that setback, it would just be on the other side. Speaking of the school bus, you know, if there's a, you know, an interest in acquiring EV buses, then that can be another behind-the-meter consumer and save, you know, significant amount of money there. That could be done after the fact, too. I know that decision hasn't been made. So it could be positively impacting the school property, not negatively, if you chose to go that way.
Let me go to Chris, please.
Ginny and I were just looking at the wastewater treatment plant electrical costs every year, about $186,000. So 36% would be looking at a $67,000 per year savings, plus $100 a month for the lease agreement.
Plus the other... Plus, plus the crediting of the exported power.
Yes, and that crediting is, we've discussed nine other very large accounts within the city. And so I just wanted to remind council, you've been looking for other revenue sources. This one, I think, is one that you very should seriously consider, because if you look at what the property has been doing over the past 30 years, it's just been sitting there. So now we have the opportunity to make a caution, and to bring in revenues and to reduce costs.
Lynn?
So Ginny, what do you think the total savings is then, for our energy costs?
Well, as Chris just said, it'd be...
That's one, but you mentioned there was nine on your accounts.
The nine other properties. When we get the full engineering reports and we get the amount of credits that they think that we're going to be getting, it would be substantial. And, but I want to wait to get all of the reports from them.
The presentation that Greg has itemizes those line items, so it's in there. Again, it's a draft because it depends on how many acres.
I'm not holding you to it, I was just curious.
No, 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 but it's in, there's a line item for what you are, it's called remote crediting.
Right.
What you could, so anything that WWTF doesn't use would go, would be exported.
Completely understand, I was just trying to understand what that revenue source was going to...
So it's, it's a couple of megawatts of power. I can't remember what the spreadsheet had on it. You know, it's six figures, I mean, it's substantial. Again, what you're spending, what did you say, you think your total cost?
For wastewater treatment plant, our budget is about $186,000.
And we looked at those nine, and we came up with $433,000.
Yes.
And the cost of doing this, meaning what we're looking for is would you buy power from us at eight cents, right? And that cost is about $160,000 less than what your current expenses are. So that's what your savings are, rolling in the lease, the crediting, and the reduced energy costs from, for WWTF.
I want to go to Scott, please.
I got a few questions. None of this is going to have battery storage, right? This is all just going back and forth?
At the moment, you're correct, right? So that anything that is generated would either be used by WWTF or go out the door.
Good. And then, can you read what we're doing one more time? I didn't catch everything that you read to us.
Of course, yeah. I just wanted to put forward, too, it gives me a chance to just say, we don't, I mean, there's no hard and fast, we don't have to vote on this motion tonight, you know, this is just a proposal, I just wanted to mention that. So it authorizes the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding between the city and Akadia Energy Corporation to establish a framework for good-faith discussion regarding the potential development, construction, and operation of a renewable energy installation at city-owned property on Silas Lane.
Okay.
The key here is that it's non-binding, this is, this is an opportunity for us to explore.
Before you get a formal proposal.
That's right.
That's right.
Go ahead, Scott.
So, Greg, we haven't looked at any other companies, just this one?
No, this is the only company I'm aware of that is proposing this particular thing. We didn't do an RFP, this, again, as Chuck mentioned in his presentation, Jody Zakrowski from the IDA connected us with Chuck, and that's how that conversation started.
Honestly, I don't know anybody else who's doing this, but that doesn't mean they couldn't, but...
I mean, okay, I just, as long, it's non-binding, but it's, it's the framework to get something started, to look at the land is what we're trying to do tonight.
That's right.
Okay.
I want to go to Mike, please.
I just wanted to correct a couple of misstatements that Ginny and Katie, that you both said, that this land is not being used for anything, because it is one of the most popular parcels of Sasquatch and Greenway. And that was initially my concern when I heard your presentation, but there was a good conversation after your last meeting. And obviously, the site plan isn't laid out, the, I mean, the graphic that they showed the site plan, basically, their initial rendering showed the Greenway trails being, having to be removed. But we talked about it, and there's certainly options, like you mentioned, as far as, you know, the seven acres is with 150 setback, 12 acres is with a 50-foot setback, but, I mean, personally, I don't know why we need a setback between that land and the Department of Public Works land, for example, or the school district, so, you know, it hasn't resolved exactly how many acres there is, but as long as we know that it's still a continuing discussion, which it seems like it is, then I can support it.
You have to agree to it, or it isn't going to happen.
Right, exactly. That's not this, but rather what we decide.
Correct, correct.
Exactly. If there's no further discussion, unless there is, I think we can call a vote.
Councilmember Moshe Kumpoli.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo.
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh.
Aye.
Councilmember LaCarre Chu.
Yes.
Councilmember Carson.
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington.
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest Ruffart.
Yes.
Councilmember Mattson.
Yes.
Okay. Your evening has opened up for you.
Thank you for having me. We've been passing suggested drafts, Greg, and Greg sent me back something today, we'll turn it around, and Ken, let's have fun with this. If it works for you, then we'll do it.
I appreciate that. I appreciate the presentation, I think we all do.
I can use?
No.
No, that was for him to use. I just used for the, I just...
I did it.
Thank you again, Chuck. There is a public hearing before the council, mayor's public hearing, Local Law 10, I'm going to presume, X.
To be numbered.
To be, oh, Local Law to be numbered, thank you. Of 2025, authorizing a... Of two thousand and twenty-five, authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in general municipal law, section three C, as approved by the common council on October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this? Seeing no hands, we're gonna close that public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak, uh, as a petitioner? Seeing no hands. Um, do we have any correspondence?
We do.
We do. Would you like to read it?
Yep.
Okay.
This one's good. Okay. These are our three. One is quite lengthy. We'll do that one first. This is, um, subject is forest and watershed management, and this is submitted by Caitlin Davy, Sixth Ward resident. Hi, Scott. I'm writing as a Sixth Ward constituent, not in my formal capacity as the City of Oneonta Environmental Board Commissioner. See, saying carries, so these comments regarding forest and by extension watershed management will be shared with the full council. Forster Rod Jones spoke to the board this month about the Hoover Lake logging operation, but questions and concerns remain, many of which have been echoed by city residents in community conversations and social media forums. The city issued FAQ would go a long way here as a starting point. Furthermore, I call upon the council to address forest management in intentional, holistic way. Based on what I've learned and heard, here are points I'd like you and the council to consider for the interest of responsible resource stewardship and stakeholder responsiveness. Oneonta needs a formal management, excuse me, Oneonta needs a formal forest management plan when that includes a wetland setback. Acknowledging that intentional stewardship of forest is important to forest health and healthy ecosystems, the current forest management philosophy seems to be trees are going to die someday anyway, let's make money off of them now. Logging has been an important revenue system, revenue stream. This view minimizes the impact on our watershed, especially the increase of sediment in the reservoir, which threatens the sustainability of community water sources over time. A wetland setback, riparian buffer rule has been standardized practice in the industry for at least twenty years to protect water quality and water ecosystems. However, this is not part of Oneonta's planning process. This view completely overlooks the benefits that minimally disturbed forests have on tourism and recreation. Significant volunteer time has gone into trails at Hoover Lake, seeing so many grand trees felled and so much collateral damage is demoralizing to volunteers and outdoor enthusiasts. It hinders volunteer recruitment and rightly raises questions about whether the city is responsibly managing the land and including stakeholders in decision-making. This can result in reduced trust of local government overall. Mr. Jones asserted to the board that all contracts include adherence to industry-best practices with the extensive soil compaction and rutting to be mitigated by future backblading. While this sounds good, industry referred to here is an, is an extractive one, and the best practices appear to be bare minimum, as evidenced by the still evident impact of past operations and the fact that the current operation started before the ground froze, already creating significantly more damage than necessary. Trees that were not marked for cutting were caught regardless, apparently to get the bigger money back, money-making trees. This shows a lack of regard for the ecosystem, the recreation area, and transparency with the public. In terms of issuing an FAQ, the public would like to know at minimum, how many more times will this land be logged? What mitigation techniques are loggers accountable for? Where does the money go? How are stakeholders engaged in decision-making? Since I already know where the money goes, one more point here. The optics of cutting down trees to pay to cut down more trees is not good, to put it mildly. This is in reference to using money from the Community Landscaping Fund to pay for tree maintenance for the Oneonta Airport. Specifically using money from this fund to pay for tree removal work that will supposedly be eighty percent reimbursed by a federal grant. In this time of legally obligated federal grants being canceled left and right, I submit that this is a risky and irresponsible strategy. Money used to front that expense should come from the airport's capital improvement fund instead of especially. If this work is being done to be in compliance with future airports' status aspirations and not with the current status quo. Thank you for your time and your service to our community. The next one, the subject is logging along Oneonta Creek and Tributaries, and this is submitted by Dr. Paul Bauer, B-A-U-E-R. I write to express my concern about the current logging along Oneonta Creek and its tributaries. I am not against logging, but I think that it should be done in an environmentally sound and sustainable way that does not interfere with recreational use of that terrain. The county and the state recommend thirty to one hundred foot setback on logging to protect streams environment, yet logging is occurring right up to the edge of the streams. In addition, degrading the streamside experience of hiking and cycling the recently opened trails in this area also makes a little sense. Councilmember Rothbart estimates that saving fifty of the four thousand trees in the city plan to log only one point two five percent of the total likely would save the city money in the long run. I think fifty old growth trees along those trails are easily worth seventy-five dollars apiece. The last one is, um, subject watershed logging, and this is by Jamie Walker. I strongly support the request by Mike Forster Rothbart to have the council pause the harvesting of mature trees near creeks that contribute to the city's water and recreation. I walked down from lower crossroad to the Gurgles bench Saturday, and I was amazed and saddened to see the trash of that previously lovely, for a few weeks, lower portion of the newly opened trail system now coming in mud bath. I say nothing of the priceless oaks. I urge a pause for consideration of options showing greater foresight.
Thank you very much. So there is, and that's all the correspondence, correct?
Correct.
I can't think that there's anyone who's more busy than Dr. Cardeji, who I'm not gonna let sneak out yet. So as you finished, as you finished your presentation, um, because we had a presenter to follow you, and I did not want to set the precedent of applauding you and not applauding Acadia, I think all of us at council want to extend to you, and please do share with all of your staff and everybody at SUNY our appreciation for everything you do. And now, thank you.
Thank you. And I did forget, because Caroline does have some, uh, a report that we did hand out on our, you know, uh, community impact.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
We're gonna move on to our committee reports, beginning with a Quality of Life and Infrastructure Committee report, and Scott, if you would, please.
Well, I guess I'll work backwards, since we had the correspondence about the trails, because we did talk about the trails and the quality of life for a little bit. Some questions we could answer, work on, some of those were, uh, the map, closures of the land for, um, to the public for, for safety reasons as we go through the process, try to make it more clear, make sure we got NICS allowed, make sure it's on the website and wherever else we can get it, um, posted. Some of the other things that were brought up, like trying to pause it or buy back trees and stuff like that, which are contract issues, we had said that that's gotta be a council decision along with the city attorney. It needs to be involved in that, 'cause I don't know the contract off the top of my head, or what we may or may not be on the hook for. And the other problem with doing that is you'll probably never get another contractor to cut trees down ever again, 'cause we did make a commitment. So that's gonna be up to the council if they wanted to take that on at some point in the discussion agenda. Um, working, then we talked about the Westcott lot retaining wall, um, connection and, and the project and where we stand with that. It's, Chris, done in, end of November is what we're looking at, hopefully.
Basically waiting for the handrail.
Um, and when there's a handrail that the, the owner, um, Jimmy Tomano would like to extend, um, when we get there, we say we want, um, some type of agreement, um, in writing, so we don't have the handshake agreements anymore, so that if twenty years down the road, something happens, staff after us and councils after us have something in writing to look back on. I don't know if he'll be here in twenty years, Dave. Might make your job a little easier.
It's up to you folks and the administration.
So, um, and, uh, we did talk about where we are reassuring one, did shore up one of the posts where our old walkway went up to help out the landowner, even though we couldn't really find anything in any agreements of who shared what or where. So, um, little good faith gesture there, hopefully will be taken for him. And then we talked about the D Street EVSE datas, and Greg, you're gonna have to refresh my memory, 'cause I have no idea what that means.
Electric vehicle chargers.
There you go. And we were looking at those, um, possibly there might be a grant that we can go for, um, which the, the committee said try to go for it. If we get it, Greg, it'd be very little cost to us if we put them other places to try to look at the future, not knowing what it is in the next seventy, ten years down the road with, with electric vehicles. Um, we're also looking at our charge point, how much we charge, how much we don't. Do we want to be profitable with it? Cost neutral, or is it something that, you know, we can put into a fund and then try to help with our infrastructure back when we have to replace it and stuff like that? So, I mean, it was, you know, that's just a meeting.
Okay. Uh, questions, comments? Ask Katie.
I have two questions about, um, I have one question about two topics that you spoke about. So I'll go backwards.
Okay.
The Deets Lot chargers, is this like a reiteration of the grant that was brought up about chargers in the city hall lot? Or is this like a separate?
No, we had talked about EV chargers generally at the la, the previous meeting. So we came back with some data on how those chargers at D Street Lot have been utilized, how many people have utilized them, what energy usage, what revenue, that sort of thing. Uh, and we mentioned, we've seen that there was, that same grant that funded the initial installation of those chargers has come back out again through DC where the city could potentially apply to install chargers elsewhere in the city.
Okay.
Whether that city hall lot or anywhere else.
Okay.
So the court generally was favorable, you know, or in favor of us looking into that and potentially bringing that back through.
Okay. Um, okay, the second thing is the handrail agreement about the Westcott lot. So I was under the impression that we were no longer sharing the handrail and the platform. I haven't been down there to check it out, but could you just elaborate on that a little bit, what the, what the agreement is and how those are? Are they staying separate or are they not separate?
So there really, there is no current agreement between the city and Mr. Tino, neighbor. Um, we're going to draft an agreement that will review by both parties. So no, basically, the city has no reason to use that platform. There are no, our stairs, no, or located that location, so there is no reason for the city to have that as access.
Okay, and so the proposal for the agreement is to, what?
To, to allow the private structure that has been built on city property and has been there for decades.
Right.
To be there legally.
Okay, gotcha.
There's no agreement easement or anything like that.
Okay, right. And that's like the ingress, ingress from that one door, so that would, that's what, there's two doors?
I think there's two doors. One goes downstairs, one goes upstairs.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Further questions or comments for Scott? Thank you very much, Scott. Appreciate it.
I think Chris and Greg, they gave most of the report.
Yes, wherever we get there, right? Um, Finance and Human Resources Committee, Cecilia.
Thank you. So I think, um, given that we as a committee moved to most of the items, if not all of the items, um, from our discussion to the consent agenda, I'm just gonna have us, if there's questions about the consent agenda, when we get there, we can discuss them.
Okay, all righty. Um, okay, so that takes us then to the, unless there's something for Cecilia, there isn't. Uh, that'll take us to the approval of warrants with motion number one, that the common council approves the warrants totaling four hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. That's the same be placed on the finance director's desk for payment as presented. Can I have a motion to approve? I've got Elaine, followed by Lynn, I think that was your hand, Lynn, and, uh, can I take a vote, please?
Councilmember Mosher Campoli.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo.
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Lapar Shu.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Yes.
Oops, sorry, Councilmember Carson. Really sorry. My finger was there.
Get out.
Councilmember Forster Rothbart.
Aye.
Councilmember Masson.
Yes. All right, before I get into the consent agenda, I'll ask if there was anything that, um, in the last, yes?
Can we pull number ten, please? I have one question about that as a council.
All right. If there's something else that we're pulling, um, we'll, uh, take the consent agenda, uh, and apparently no questions. We'll take the consent agenda from two through nine, and, uh, yes?
I do have one question. I don't want to take this off the consent agenda, but didn't we already do?
Yes.
Number five?
Five? I'm sorry. Yes, yes.
Can we appoint those people in?
Yes, there, there was a bit of a glitch in the system. Uh, some folks, um, just didn't know that they were supposed to be where they needed to be to sign the oath book, and we just need to get them, we, there was just a glitch. These things happen. Um, so that said, um, we're gonna take two through nine, and I need a motion to approve. I've got Don, followed by Katie, and we can take the vote, please.
Councilmember Mosher Campoli.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo.
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Lapar Shu.
Aye.
Councilmember Carson.
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington.
Yes.
Councilmember Forster Rothbart.
Yes.
Councilmember Masson.
Yes.
All right, very good. Um, rather than push motion number ten to discussion on the other side of the city administrative report and mayor's remarks, because, um, we want to kind of dive into the tentative budget, I'd like to, um, look at motion number ten now as a discussion item. Uh, so that motion is, that's, I'm good with everybody, that motion is that the common council approves the following additions to the general fund reserve accounts, public safety reserve, five hundred thousand dollars. Highway equipment reserve, five hundred thousand dollars. Streets and sidewalk reserve, five hundred thousand dollars. Parks and recreation reserve, one hundred thousand dollars. IT reserve, one hundred thousand dollars. Airport reserve, fifty thousand dollars. Do I have a motion to approve? I've got Don, followed by Lynn, and, uh, Katie, you pulled this, so let me, um, let you start the discussion.
I did. I have only been, uh, present for, like, um, conversations where we have alluded to, um, these particular reserves, but I, I haven't been present for any conversations in which we talked about the reasoning for that. And so I was just hoping that we could get a little bit of an overview, maybe the stuff that is accountable, or we just do it.
Ginny?
Well, what I'd like to is, um, refer you to your NICS sheet and your preliminary budgets. Here we are.
Your I T. It's your sixth time doing this. Which page did it?
Page sixteen.
Yeah, which page?
It's just page one of the NICS sheet. It's the detail, oh, just like you're...
It's just page one of Appendix C, it's the detail, all, just like your, so the.
So, in Appendix C, what we provided you is the detail of all of our reserves, and you will see that we have proposed, we have the current balance calculated for what we have committed and also what we have purchase orders for and what we have actually expended. Then we've got the 2025 additional proposed additions, and then what the 2026 preliminary budget is showing for the uses. So then you will see where the new balance is estimated to be. So, if you want to just take a minute to look at those totals, and you can see why we decided to recommend the additions the way we did. So, in summary, to, basically, we're asking to add 1.7 million to the reserves, but the 2026 preliminary will use, utilize almost 1.6 of that 1.7. So by reestablishing the amounts that we have recommended, we'll bring the funds back up to basically, almost to the balances where they currently are.
Katie, do you have questions?
I might, unless we're gonna.
Okay. Can I? Yes.
Okay, so, under the public safety equipment reserve, if I follow this correctly, you want to add an additional 500,000.
Correct.
Am I correct? But if I flip over to page two of Appendix C and look at the explanation, I see that you want to commit 150, 50, and 524.9, so that totals out to 724,900.
Those have been committed.
Those are, those are already committed. That, those funds are already committed, the 7 million, or the 724,900?
Yes.
That's under the committed column already.
Correct. So then, we would be adding an additional, that's not with the 500,000?
Correct, that is not with the 500,000.
Right, so at, according to the sheet on page two, well, that's as of 2024, what is the current balance?
It's the 150,000. On page two, under current balance, 150,612.26. That's the uncommitted balance of the public safety reserve. So we want to add 500,000 to that?
150,000.
And then use 390,000 in 2026 to bring the balance to 260,000.
Okay, so you're pulling the 724.9 out of the 1.2?
Correct, correct.
Okay, plus, you're, they're asking for 150,641.50 for two new police vehicles?
The, no, the 150,000 is the current uncommitted balance of the public safety reserve.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm looking down below here, in the line item ask from, is that Appendix B, whatever it is for the ask, they're asking to buy two new police vehicles, plus the upgrades, uplifting, I guess they call it?
Yes.
And that totals out between those two items is 150,641.50.
What schedule are you on, Lynn?
I'm Appendix C, page two.
Okay, are you looking at the, are you looking at the 2025 actuals?
Excellent. Purchase orders.
Those expenditures have already happened.
Okay.
Those were paid for in 2025.
Okay, so I guess, but within this budget of the 26, they want to buy two more police vehicles?
Correct.
And they represent, was it 140,000?
140,000, correct, yep.
And that's total with the uplifting, whatever the uplifting?
With the uplifting, and then the, also what's in there, if I'm doing this from memory, is 85,000 for a camera system for the public safety building?
Yeah, something like that.
And then, there is, I want to say 100 and some thousand for air packs, and then 30,000, she, correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm doing this from my memory, about 30,000 for imaging cameras.
Something like that, I remember those also. So, I think last year, we put in 500,000 towards the fire truck, right? Because the fire truck is gonna take three more years to buy?
Yes, that's, that's what, that's what's committed, yeah. The cash balance in the fund is much higher, because that, those monies have not been spent yet.
Right, are you recommending that we should put more money towards the fire truck, rather than borrowing and bonding for more money?
No, but what I'm, what I will be recommending for the future, for, when, depending on how 2026 concludes, I would be recommending that we add more to the public safety reserve again, to reduce the bomb that we won't need for the fire truck.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're staying on that savings plan for the fire truck?
Yes, yes, yeah, we are.
It was like two or three million of money?
Yeah, it's just over $2 billion.
Yeah, okay.
All right, you're good, Lynn?
Yes, sir.
All right. Katie, do you have questions?
I'm just digesting all this info, and I told you that I haven't gotten to it sooner, so.
And I do want to say, you don't have to approve this tonight. If you need more time to study it, we can always bring it up again later.
Could I make a motion to table until after the budget discussion, please?
Second. Okay.
Could you repeat what you wanted to say?
I just motioned to table until after the budget discussion.
Do a second.
I hate to be prickly about this, but you can make a motion to table.
Right, I know, I know.
Then you can bring it off the table.
I was just declaring my intent. The motion is to table.
And then we have to open that.
Lynn, second, no debating.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Moshe Campoli.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo.
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Lapari Shu.
Aye.
Councilmember Carson.
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington.
Yes.
Councilmember Forester Rothbart.
Yes.
Councilmember Masson.
Yes.
All right, very good. We'll go to the, I'm sorry, you pointed, city administrator report.
Yeah, we're gonna skip that tonight.
We are gonna skip it tonight.
Given our last budget meeting was six hours and 45 minutes.
Right.
I think it's more important to talk about the budget tonight. Unless you have questions.
I do, I do.
Does anybody have, yeah, Katie's got a question.
So, I've been telling people that the roundabout will be finished in November sometime, but it is November sometime, so I was wondering if you could give us like more of a different, because now people are like, it is November. I know, I have no idea. It looks great, but, you know, people are wondering, some are wondering, like, now.
Yeah, I spoke with New York State DOT yesterday, just to ask where things were at. They're looking to hopefully do striping this week, that's what's intended to be done. They've been having issues with their striping contract, paving marketing contractor getting here, we know about that from our experience as well. They also need to install signage, they need to install the, some equipment, the rapid repair, the flash peacons, there are light poles that are back ordered, they're gonna be here for, I'm not sure when they'll be here, I'm not that up to speed on their project.
Okay.
But it's gonna be at least a couple of weeks, it sounds like, before they might open the roundabout to fully open to full traffic. And even then, there will be some things that are still gonna have to be completed.
Okay.
So I think there's guide rail that needs to be installed as well, so it sounds like at this point, they're a little behind what they were targeting. I hadn't heard of another update until I called and asked, just because I anticipated the question.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Also, I think we should put out a PSA on how to use the roundabout, because right now, it's brilliant.
Looks brilliant.
The roundabout, people aren't using blinkers, they're not yielding, they're just like flying around, they speed up coming in from the other side, not stop, like, there's, it's like chaos, so.
Signage will take, take. Who wants to do a PSA? Don?
I do think signage will help. And the DOT has, and I've shared it a couple times on my Facebook page, but DOT has like a video, that's like a perspective video of like what to do, so that's really helpful, too. I'm just like, yeah, maybe carry around a card for people, like, go here.
Throw it out the window, Evan, like, here! Please, it's washing us!
Yes, seriously.
Any other questions for Greg? Okay, also, in the interest of time, we'll dispense with my remarks, and we are gonna take ourselves a very short break for the restrooms, because we might be here for a little while, once we begin the discussion of the budget. So I'd like to think that we'll start back up at 7:30 on the button. Good luck. Nice.